Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, could you please call the roll?
Georgia Holmes, present. Bob Nelson, here. Martin Meyer, here. Harleen Kane, here. Sam Howard, present. Ron Richards, here. Carolyn Swartzenbach, present. Skylar Westle, here. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to proceed with the adoption of the agenda. Again, reminding all council members, if there is a conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda, please note that as you are voting. And I believe that we do have a minor correction. So I accept a motion at this time to approve the agenda.
What correction?
There's, I-
There's no correction.
No correction on that. There's one on the next item I was getting at.
Okay, I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Any question, comments, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the minutes, we do have a minor correction to the minutes. And Misty, if you could explain that.
At the last council meeting, there's a motion made to surplus a sharp copier, two complete and bi-parcial slum flush valves, a floor washer, two vacuums, and one control box, and a speaker for an EV sound system. It was all mentioned as being items from the library. The library only had the copier and the flush valves. The floor washer, two vacuums, one control box, and speaker for an EV sound system were from the Mueller Center. So I'd like to correct that in the minutes.
Okay, hearing that correction, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes as corrected. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, bills in between. Accept a motion at this time to accept the bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Any discussion?
I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention the 117,576, which is on page one for the number five period ending for the partial tax, parallel tax way. That will be reimbursed from the FAA and state, so 95% of it is reimbursed.
That's in the current, is what you're currently claiming?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions, discussion on the bills in between? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now moving on to the current claims, are there any? I accept a motion to approve the current claim.
I'll make a motion to accept the current claims.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
And that's the one that I was referring to on page one.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion.
I have a comment I'd like to make.
Okay, go ahead.
When it comes to review of the expenses, the council is responsible for approving or disapproving. It's my opinion, it's the one thing we've got to get right. We've got to make sure that we manage our money appropriately. And I want to thank Misty personally. Since I've been doing this, she's always paid time to go over the bills with me. It's been interesting that typically, all of them that I've identified, she's already identified and she has answers for. She's looking at these bills with a very fine tooth comb, and I appreciate that. She makes it easier for me to make an informed decision. Public will decide whether it's the right one or not, but at least it's an informed decision. So I want to thank you, Misty, I appreciate it.
Okay, Bob, and again, thank you for those comments. And I very much concur, on a day-to-day basis, that Misty is there always with the answers. And if she doesn't know, she searches to get them. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the current claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, two communications from the public. Molly, are you ready for us?
Sure thing.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Molly Brown from GenPro Solutions. And Molly is going to give us a presentation on converting some of our municipal buildings to augment our electrical power through solar generation. And I wanted to make sure that the council and the public were aware of what our intentions are. And what we would do is have this presentation to the council, let the council mull this over, and then make a decision whether we would give GenPro the go-ahead to come up with a final proposal to present to the council. Once that final proposal is presented, and then after the council's review, we would then have the council vote on that, whether this is something that we would want to do for our community. I also wanted this done at a council meeting, so that those from the public that are interested could also see the presentation. So without further ado, Molly Brown, we would certainly look forward to hearing your presentation, the long, hard amount of studies that you've done on our buildings. And so please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Molly Brown, and I'm the Vice President of Energy Production at GenPro Energy Solutions. Some of you may have seen our trucks running around town. We just did the lighting retrofit on the schools this past year. So you may be familiar to some of us, you may not be. So just a little rundown of who we are and what we do. We're actually from Piedmont, South Dakota, right off exit 44, so we're a local South Dakota company. We have two main divisions, one's energy production, which encompasses solar energy, backup generation systems, and energy storage. And then the second is the energy efficiency division, which was the division that was down here working on the school this past year. Over the past four years, we have made the top solar contractors list in the United States. And as a little company from Piedmont, South Dakota, we're pretty proud of that fact, because we're going up against some big California, Colorado, and Massachusetts companies. But we're making great headroads in the industry, and actually getting some national recognition on the stage, which is really nice. We're also solar certified, there's very specific certification for solar energy throughout the country. There's only one other person in the state that has that, and only one other person in Nebraska that has that. We've worked with a lot of different partners over the years. Some are big names, some are utilities, some are small companies. And in the last year, facing a little bit of a different direction. So when we think about solar energy, a lot of people just think of solar as being, you know, something that's green, or something that technical geeks like to put on. But it's really three aspects of sustainability that we're looking at with solar energy. The first is environmental. How do we produce energy in a way that is good for our environment and clean? One is social, are we doing what's best for the community, for ourselves, to keep our society going on a long-term basis? And the third is one that we think is very important, and the reason why, you know, we've done so well in South Dakota, and that's the economic part. And sometimes people forget about the economic part. But in order to create something truly sustainable, it has to be good for all three of those aspects. And so a lot of what we've been doing with the city has been sitting down with utility bills, sitting down with rate structures, seeing what those facilities actually really, really use, and crunching a lot of numbers to figure out, financially, does this make sense? So what we're going to see in the future is a move from what we call centralized power. So you have a coal plant or a nuclear facility, now you even have the big wind farms, you know, out in South Dakota, North Dakota, and those feed the grid. And then you have all these transmission and distribution lines that funnel them back into the, eventually into the individual buildings or facilities that they use. What we're seeing more and more move towards is clean local power. And what this allows us to do is not only create an electricity grid that is stable, we have aging infrastructure, especially out in South Dakota and rural country. And we also have to make electricity travel over really far away. And the longer that distance that electricity has to travel, the more expensive it becomes to make it travel that distance. And the more likely it is, if one of those transmission lines go out, it could take out a multiple part of the grid. And we see that in our storms, Hurricane Atlas. We see that out in remote rural areas where one power line's taken down, and, you know, it takes two weeks to get back up, and whole communities don't have power. So renewable energy is also a way to create redundancies within our electrical grid. So if there is another Hurricane Atlas or other weather events, we have a way to back up some of that power remotely. So the main thing that we look at when we are talking about solar energy, and whether or not it is going to be viable for a city, is what's called the levelized cost of energy. And that is, for every kilowatt hour is the unit that you use, and you'll see that on your electric bill. So if you use one kilowatt hour, you're typically paying from about nine to 13 cents for that single unit of kilowatt hour. So we need to make a comparison between what is on those bills, and what is going to come off that solar energy system. So we take the lifetime production of that entire solar system, and we could do this with any source of generation, we could do it with wind, we could do it with a backup generator. The grid tie, they already give you that nice kilowatt hour right on your bills. But it's a way to give us a cross-comparison over different types of energy, and how much those really cost us. So when we're drilling down into numbers, this is a number that is very, very important to us. So when it comes to looking at a project portfolio, economies of scale are very important with any kind of construction project, right? The smaller the project, the more the mobilization costs. So we wanted to take a look at a project portfolio for a lot of different reasons. And this is a list of the facilities that we ended up taking in the first phase that made sense. There were some that we stripped out that absolutely did not make any sense for this project portfolio, because they threw some of those financial calculations off. And so what does economies of scale give us? They give us better financing costs, we'll get a lower interest rate from any of the banks or finance companies that we look at. They spread the risk out over multiple facilities as well. So if one facility goes down, you still have some others that are going to offset the lack of savings from one facility. There's lower installation costs, because you only have to mobilize that construction crew once, instead of, you know, nine different times. You can get longer-term financing, and that's another important thing, especially when you're looking at solar energy projects. Because the goal of that long-term financing is that your rental payments, or loan payments, or lease payments are going to come out to just about as equal as you can to your electricity savings off of your bills. And the further out we can get that financing, the better that looks. And then increased savings. So the more solar you put on, the more you're going to save off of your utility bills. So this is an example of some of the facilities that we looked at. This is the wastewater treatment facility, which would be a ground-mount system. And I just gave an idea of how big those systems are, and how much energy they would produce. The Mueller Center, where we are, we looked at as well. Evans Plunge. The police station, that's a very, very small system comparatively. And then the last thing that we looked at, there's a couple of pumping stations that you have in town. And it's, again, we live in a place where there's a lot of snow, and snowstorms can knock out the grid. So how can we create a redundant backup system for those water pumping stations? So if we have power that goes out, you don't lose your water. So what we want to look at is called a microgrid, and that would be a combination of a solar energy system, a backup generator, and some energy storage. And the reason they like redundancy and resiliency in these smaller systems is, okay, what if a tree takes out the entire solar system and you lose production on that? Or what if all of a sudden, your fuel line goes down, or you can't get enough diesel to run the generator? So this gives us a way to keep those backups in place, so in the event of a power outage or emergency, you just wouldn't lose that water. And so we looked at the Hot Brook Pumping Station, and the solar system would look just about like this, and you would have a nice generator and battery set next to the building on that land. The other thing that we can also do with this solar project is give you a public display. And this is really nice for the city, because it allows you to bring the community in, to show really what you're trying to do. So this is an example of one of the projects we have in Nebraska. So on any given day, it'll show you exactly how many trees you've saved, how many gallons of water you could have produced with that energy, how much gas you've saved. And you can put these displays all throughout the city. So if you have a system on the library, you can put one up in there that shows the library. If you have a system here, you can put one up in the lobby that shows how much solar energy is producing. And it's a good learning tool for kids to understand about electricity, energy, and renewable energy. And it's just great to get the community involved as a whole. So what are the end project goals that we'd like to see for the city? One is an under-10-year payback on the entire project. Two is a levelized cost of energy that's less than your current retail rate. And right now, we're floating at a levelized cost of energy at about five to six cents. And the city's current retail rate is nine to 13, depending on which facility we're looking at. We want to secure the best financing option. So we work with multiple national finance companies and banks, so we can really kind of sort those out and fish for the best interest rate for the city. So we're making sure that we're getting the best option. And then we also want to add the backup to the city's water pumping stations in case of an outage. So that's a very, very broad overview of what we've been looking at over the past six months. And we're still waiting for a couple of detailed items back from Black Hills Energy in order to size some of the generator and backup storage systems for the pumping stations. But we're getting pretty close to having some really good numbers crunched to present to you guys as a full proposal. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned Evans Plunge as one of the candidates. So if you set up a solar system, what percentage of the daily energy cost would be covered by a solar system?
Evans Plunge is, I want to say it was about 25%. I didn't bring all of my exact numbers with me. That building uses quite a bit of energy, so it's not, we can't like say it's 75%. When we looked at the library, we could do 100% of the library's usage with a nice little ground mount that would be outside the library. Which again, it's great for such a public facility to be able to say that's net zero as well. So the library was a good candidate for that, and we're close to the wastewater treatment plant as well.
Making energy use of the waste?
Yes.
I do.
You'd have to take out a couple of trees, but.
I have a question.
Sure.
Am I going, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Do I understand correctly that none of these systems, except the one with the backup, that all this doesn't go back into the grid or whatever?
No, most of the facilities will be using every single ounce of energy that we're going to, we could put on them.
That's my question.
I know, I have one. The solar cells have gone down in price since they first came out. I know it's really, they've improved considerably. But I thought that most of them, if you produce more than what you could use, were going back. And we're not going to do that, we're going to store it, or what are you saying?
No, these systems are small enough that they're just not going to produce enough to feed back. Black Hills Energy rules, like say we did have a system that was overproducing just a little bit, and you fed back onto the grid, they have to pay what's called avoided cost, which is 2.8 cents. So we never want to oversize a system for a building, because if you're only getting 2.8 cents for the energy that you're putting back on the grid, it really doesn't help offset the cost of the system that it would take to oversize it. Whereas if we're using it behind the meter, you're basically canceling out your retail rate. And if your retail rate is nine to 13 cents, that's a lot better than getting 2.8 cents.
Okay, thanks.
One more quick question. I read, this has been a month ago maybe, something about solar panels imported from other countries and companies in the US, you explain what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, so there's actually a trade case right now that is going before President Trump. And so solar panels were at this, like, all-time low, and it was beautiful, because we had just talked up on them. And then there were two companies, which were actually not US manufacturers, one was a German manufacturer, and one was a Chinese manufacturer, that were saying that this flood of imports on the US market was hurting the US solar manufacturing industry. So there's a lot of fighting going on, and everything got put in front of the Federal Trade Commission. After the Trade Commission made their recommendations, we actually think that the market has already corrected itself enough to cover whatever tariffs may go into effect, and we find that out on January 12. So we're all kind of waiting with bated breath, but we're not thinking that it's really going to affect module pricing that much.
I think someone said we'd be locked in for a certain price, is that right?
Yeah, the final proposal will lock you guys in for about 30 days on that. But if I know far enough out, I can allocate panels, and I know what I could buy out right now. So we're pretty good already set with the pricing that we've already looked at for some of these.
Thank you.
Molly, you mentioned 10 years potentially for the city to pay back the expense. Can you explain how long these might last?
Yeah, so the actual solar modules are warranted for 25 years of production. And the inverters are warranted for 10 to 15 years. So these systems are expected to last way longer than 25 years. They're expected to last from 30 to 40 years. So if you think about it, you're almost building your own mini-power plant for a 40-year period. So after you pay back that initial 10 years, these things are still going to keep going. So if you start to add up those savings over that 40 years, you start to see some really good numbers.
One more question. I read in the paper just tonight about the one that's supposedly going on Minnycotta. And then one of the comments in there was that they lose their efficiency, like 1% to half percent each year. Is that true, or what do you?
It's about a half a percent per year. But that's kind of an overestimation in the market, most of the panels don't lose that much. When we go through all our financial calculations, we do take that into account, that degradation of the panels. But it's, panels don't just, you know, if they hit like 70%, they're just going to stop working. Panels slowly degrade over time. So even though they're losing that minute bit of efficiency every year, they're not just going to all of a sudden go out. And if they do, then they're under warranty till the year 25, so you get brand-new ones anyway.
And how about hail damage and stuff like that?
Hail damage is not so bad around here. We've had a couple panels that we think may have had some hail damage or water damage on them that we put in in about '09. But we've never had any major storms take them out. And, you know, we're up in Piedmont, which is the hill belt of South Dakota, and we get giant grapefruits all the time. But the good thing about our storms is that they usually come from the northwest, and panels are usually facing to the south. So they're coming at the backside of those systems most of the time, or on the wrong side of the building. So they glance off in enough of a way where you're not getting the full force of that hail.
Hi, quick question. What sort of maintenance is required for these? They're not just a plug and forget, correct? You have to clean them?
Yeah, you want to clean them about biannually. You know, we have some systems in a couple places where they have a Canadian geese migration come through, and then all of a sudden, you really want to clean them after that. But we live in a place also that has a lot of precipitation, so the rain's going to wash them off. The snow, you're usually at an angle that's enough where the snow gets heated up a little bit from that electricity coming through, and the snow will slide right off. As long as you don't have like a giant dust storm coming through, or... And I don't think any of our sites have major plants or anything next door to them. You know, just an occasional washing is fine. The monitoring system that I showed you on the front end, that has the pretty display on the front, has a really intricate display on the back end, so that the city would have access, we would have access to monitor it. So if an inverter went down, or if all of a sudden, production went down to the city, it will email everybody that is in that system saying, "Help, help, something's wrong." So we could go and immediately fix it.
So it wouldn't require an additional person, a maintenance person, to go around and clean all these once a month or whatever?
No, you could either use your existing staff. They're really pretty low maintenance.
Thank you.
Has somebody done the study, do we geograph the situation enough to let the sun to make it back on investment?
Yeah, so the sunlight up here is actually pretty decent. One is our altitude, and two because western South Dakota has pretty darn good weather. So when we do these system designs, we actually look at both radiance, and we look at kilowatt-hours per kilowatt installed, which is called our energy ratio. And we're always making sure that those ratios, our designs are maxing that ratio out. And we're really producing as much as possible from those panels. But we have really great production from sunlight up here.
Is those panels going to be situated to the sun, they're going to be turned by itself, or by stationary?
These are actually going to be stationary, because most of them are roof-mount systems. You can't do a tracker on a system. And even the wastewater treatment plant, we kept as just a ground-mount stationary, because at that size, the trackers get a little bit too expensive for the extra production that they get. Most of our bigger, bigger systems, where we're doing like fields of corn, and putting, you know, 4 megawatts out there, we'll do tracker systems. But for these in particular, it was more cost-effective to keep them fixed.
So technically, going to be maybe four, five hours, 100% sun?
In the winter?
Anytime.
No, in the-
So that's going to be on the angles, not going to get that 10%?
No, they're facing south, so you get morning sunlight to evening sunlight with the way that they're situated. But, I mean, during the winter, we're going to get a very, pretty short window of sunlight. But during the summer, you get longer hours.
I have one more question for you. You just put some new on the plunge and a few other places. What are your attachments, or are they going to cause any problems with that?
Yeah, so these systems are called our ballasted systems, so that means they're non-penetrating. And there's a couple of different types of racking that you could look at. So there's basically cement blocks that are placed on ballast trays. And so they're fixed to the roof, they're snow-rated, are snow-load rated, and wind-load rated with those systems. Obviously, that's really important in our area. But they don't penetrate the roof, so you don't have to worry about leaks.
Got a question on the warranty. What happens if warranties say for extra amount of years, and five, 10 years, five, eight years down the road, a company goes bankrupt?
Most of the time, if one of those solar module companies goes bankrupt, a third party will take over those warranties. So the most recent one was Sun Edison, where they went through a bankruptcy, and they now, even their old panels that were on the market then, still have a 25-year warranty, because a third party took- have a, still have a twenty-five-year warranty because a third party took that over. Um, and that's also something that GenPro, as GenPro is willing to guarantee that if for some reason the panels that we use that company goes bankrupt and we can't get that warranty and something happens, we'll, we'll cover that.
I have a question, if um, I, this is an exciting industry and I'm kind of paying a little bit of attention to it. I know there's always new advancements with technology. Is there any consideration when you install a system like this? If there were to be some major development, say, five years down the road, do you guys have any consideration for that with a system that's already installed? Is there any way to change anything out if that were to happen?
Yeah, if you really wanted to change it out, the way that these systems are are put together are pretty modular. So if you wanted to switch out panels and keep the same inverters, or if you wanted to switch out inverters and keep the same panels, you could do that. Um, we just retrofitted one that we did on Ellsworth Air Force Base um just because they wanted to switch out to a different style of of inverter that was we had put one big centralized inverter out at theirs and they wanted to switch to what are called string inverters, which is a lot of little small ones. And what that that helps you do is if the inverter goes down, then your whole system goes down. So you have a lot of different inverters and your system can still produce even if you have one failure along that line. So, and they did that just because they wanted to do that, not that the system was, that there was anything wrong with it. They, they just wanted an upgrade.
And what kind of inverters do you use? Who's the manufacturer for your inverters?
Um, it depends on the voltage of the building. So SolarEdge um is one that we use. We use Sungrow, which is mostly for kind of the larger uh ground mount systems or for four eighty volt systems. There's also a company called HiQ. Um, that makes a really handy wet-rated inverter that we've used on on some projects. But on, and Proteus is the last one, I think, that we would have on some of some of these buildings because it's going to depend on the size. Like the police station is eleven KW, so we would have to use a residential type inverter on that. Whereas, you know, up here, when you get to a bigger system size, we need to kind of move to someone who specializes in commercial grade.
One more question. I know she didn't have City Hall on there, I don't think. Did I see it?
Um, there was too much shading on City Hall and there was a bunch of stuff on the roof. And so it just didn't make sense. We could put like a couple panels up, but it, we kind of had to take it off the list.
Okay, thanks.
Which made me happy that we didn't have to worry about the older.
Okay, Molly, one uh, one other question. How are we going to be able to afford this? And uh you mentioned a ten-year or less uh payback, how does that work?
Yeah, so the types of financing that we usually have available for these projects are zero upfront cash to the city, so you wouldn't have to put a a big down payment down. And what we're looking at for this particular project is a straight twenty-year municipal lease. And I have one company that I work with that's a national company that specializes in energy projects for municipalities. Um, and that's basically all that they do, but it's almost like a straight equipment slash operating lease on these, depending on on what we want.
Okay, so to pay for that lease, uh how would we, how could we, how could we afford that then?
From the savings on your electricity bills.
Oh. And uh, that's been calculated and that's where we get the uh
The payback, yeah.
Okay. And so after the ten years or the eight years or whatever that calculation comes out, then we would be able to put those savings back into our budget?
Yeah, after that, there, it's all direct cash flow from electricity savings to the city.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Now, to follow up on what the mayor just said, twenty-year lease, but it's a ten-year payback. It sounds like we paid for the equipment in ten years. Why are we placing an additional ten years?
So we do take into account what we, the escalation rate for electricity prices. And the reason you guys kind of fall in that that eight to ten-year place is because in the first couple years, and I think it's about year four when when that would switch over, your lease payment's going to be slightly more than what your electricity savings are going to be than about eight is when, and that's a net cash, net cash flow. You're a finance person. Uh, the net cash flow, so, but I think about year four is when that that's going to switch over where your electricity savings will be more than the lease payment.
But it is a twenty-year obligation then?
Yes.
Entering to a twenty-year lease?
Yep. There are other, there are other lease terms that we could look at, and I think we crunched like a five and a seven um and a ten. So there's, you know, you could look at all sorts of different term options, but for this particular project, the twenty-year kind of made the the most sense. But that's something, as we get the final proposal together, we can put different options in front of you as well.
And when do you think that final proposal will be ready for us to review?
I am hoping within the next couple weeks. When would you like it ready?
And that's, Bob, that's the one thing that we, the first decision that the council would happen to make is to vote to give them the go-ahead to do that final proposal.
Are we committed to them once we tell them to give us the proposal?
No, we still have the the option, looking at those final numbers because they they change based on the price of the solar panels and the financing that uh GenPro would be able to get, so that that changes. And so that would lock us into that thirty-day
Right.
pricing window once we get that that final proposal.
Okay. And I just have two little questions. Is the police department, it it's, you said it's small, it's like it's a residential. Is that cost-effective? Put up solar panels on?
Yeah, because they have one of the higher costs of energy. So putting anything up there is going to help offset that that higher cost. Like the bigger the facility, usually the lower your cost of energy. So with the pumping stations, the cost of energy there is lower. Think here, um, the cost of energy is lower, it's on a different rate schedule. But the smaller buildings have to pay the higher electricity prices.
We're located close to Hales Materials. My house is always covered in dust. Is that going to affect these panels?
Um, they will get, if it's in the right direction and they're going to get a soap layer, it will affect some of the production. So I think that's something to to be aware of, to see if they need to be cleaned a little more often than a typical system would be.
Will that website that you showed us alert us to those kind of things? Will we be able to see production on a daily basis?
Yeah, we can see a drop in production versus that.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question. So did you look at our streetlights as being ones that we could use this on or not? Is that something that you ever approached?
Yes, we actually do have solar street lighting. Um, and we also can do LED retrofits for street lighting. And this is something that the finance company that I'm working with uh right now actually likes to add to their financing packages. Um, so it's definitely something we can take a peek at.
Good, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Well, Molly, one other thing, if uh we did go forward with this, would GenPro be willing to sponsor a uh solar electric car charging station somewhere in our downtown area?
I I will go back to the 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 big bosses, but I think that's definitely something we can entertain.
Okay, just uh, just checking. Any other uh comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much, Molly.
Thank you all for having me tonight.
Thank you very much.
There any other communications from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to personnel. Have one personnel action, I accept a motion to uh approve that action.
I'll make the motion out, motion to approve personnel.
Second that. Any questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to committee reports, administrative and finance, Carol Ann?
We'll meet December the fourth at one o'clock at City Hall.
Airport Advisory Committee, Georgia?
There was no meeting this um I don't think there'll be one this month either. We'll just leave it until like December.
Okay. Custerfall River Regional Waste Management District, Ron?
Now, we met on November ninth at the North County Air. Business basically approved the two thousand eighteen budget. The re, uh, operation permit renewal is pending signatures, but it has been approved, just like the state business. Medical waste was brought up and discussed about what we're going to do about it. At at this point, they're going to continue executing as approved by the generators, what they can bring, what they cannot bring. Two thought, um the contract with Bob Larder's construction company for the operation of that was approved through two thousand twenty. It was a seven and a half percent increase in the fees that they charge. No increase in the tipping fees at this present. Next meeting, January eleventh, two thousand eighteen, year's new percent seventeen.
Okay, Ron, thank you very much. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Ann?
I have nothing to report for this month, we'll meet on the sixth, five PM at the library.
Okay, thank you. Evans Planes Advisory Committee, Skyler?
I was not able to attend this last meeting, but I will get the minutes and report on the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Parks, Recreation, Beautification and Cultural Development, Marty?
Next meeting will be December fourth at three PM at City Hall.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Harleen?
The next meeting will be held um November the twentieth at seven o'clock in City Hall. December, I'm sorry, December twentieth.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety, Bob?
Well, public safety and public works were postponed due to delays.
Southern Hills Economic Development, and I've got Georgia and Marty listed on that.
I I did attend that and I have some really interesting things that came about from that. It was on November seventeenth. And if we could, I'd like to have this in our minutes, Misty. Twelve thousand five hundred and eight dollars and thirty-two cents were cost offset for the city for the City Hot Springs Canton property, which they did the environmental assessment phase one and two. I thought that was really a very good thing for us. We've had a lot of new development. If you go down, up and down River Street right now, you'll see we've got lights on most of our buildings again. And I understand that uh Shadco had a lot to do with all those. They do have some more business starting up. Uh, Two Bed Breakfast that will be open um, that will be opening this net last week. A new insurance company that relocating from Sioux Falls and a landscape company relocating from Love Island area. They have some classes, quick book classes that they are scheduling for this month. And they had some really interesting things that came up, I felt, for um they have what they call Build Dakota Road Show and they had OREX participate. Hot Springs and Edmont did not, unfortunately, but it's involves the students at the schools, the high schools. They have welding companies and uh different businesses come and help write grants with these students. And then they actually have hired some in the past. So it's something that we need to look at more seriously in our schools. There was a grant submitted for operational support to the Black Hills Energy. And um the um, South, or Southern Hills Economic Development Summit is tentatively planned for March second in two thousand eighteen.
Okay, thank you. And Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Skyler?
We did have a meeting. We discussed the possibility of getting a teaching pro. We discussed some of the comment cards from the summer. Cards are still allowed, as of now, weather depending. We discussed adding new OB stakes on the back nine. Some of Jason's winter projects include cleaning, equipment, equipment maintenance, the new irrigation system and winter watering. Our next meeting will be February twelfth.
Okay, thank you. And Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
We met fourteenth of November at the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department. Discussions was the training that they've gone, ongoing training they have at the VA, at the state festival, which both of them have been working on this. Worked out some issues, forgot things. Their new rescue truck is in service and it's had its first call at the time of this meeting. I'll turn out an accident, so I got it shaped down. There's a motion to discuss, just discuss and vote to provide life insurance on firefighters effective two thousand eighteen. This is approved, they'll, the district will pay for that and uh so that means life insurance on the guys. We discussed needing a new thermal imaging camera. And I'm not real sure, but I'm thinking it's something that they can tell hot spots are in buildings. And the one they got is at the end of its life, so they're talking about check and pricing for they're going to accept two new applications with a one-year probation period for new firefighters. I have to ask if they're, they're on, if they're starting their training. January twentieth, they're having a, their annual dinner and recognition banquet at the American Legion. That'll be in the afternoon, you know, a lot of the products they have pinned down. The five-year and ten-year planning meeting will be two fifty twenty-eight November at the Volunteer Fire Department. I'll be attending that, I guess. Next meeting, fall, December, seven PM, Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And uh, one other uh thing that we'll be adding to the committee reports. Uh, Sam Powers has graciously accepted the challenge of being the council's representative to coordinate on the comprehensive plan that our Kim Barbera has been putting together. So Sam will be working and and doing some of the editing and assisting with that. So we appreciate you stepping up and and taking a part in that. Okay, moving on in the agenda, we'll look at ordinances. We have tonight, item A, the second reading of ordinance eleven eighty-three. That's the ordinance providing for the amendment revision of chapter four A of the animals in file. Uh, this is the second reading, I'd accept a motion to uh approve that ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance eleven eighty-three, an ordinance providing for the amendment and revision of chapter four dash A, animals in file.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we uh pass that ordinance, eleven eighty-three. There any questions, comments or discussion? Okay, hearing done, uh I'd ask Misty that you would do a roll call, please.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Carol Ann Swartlback?
Yes.
Skyler Wessel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has carried, that ordinance is approved. Item B, we have a first reading of ordinance eleven eighty-four, and that's a supplemental appropriation ordinance. I'd accept a motion to approve that, you should have a copy of that in your packages.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading, or to have our first reading ordinance of eleven eighty-four supplemental appropriations.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we pass the supplemental appropriation ordinance, eleven eighty-four, first reading. Any questions, comments or discussion? Okay, again, that information is in your packages. We go ahead and uh ask all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the first reading is approved. Item C, the first reading of ordinance eleven eighty-five. And this is an ordinance providing for the amendment and revision of chapter thirty-three A of the Business Improvement District Number One.
I'd make that motion, if that's all right?
Absolutely, I'll wait a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been
Do you want me to read it or just?
No, you, you're fine. Been moved and seconded that we adopt the first reading of ordinance eleven eighty-five. Is there any? Are there any questions, comments or discussion? And Misty, could you just give us a quick summary of what that ordinance does? I know you've been working with the group on this.
Our bid ordinance, our Business Improvement District ordinance was originally adopted in 2011. Our original ordinance had boundaries specific to owners of hotels and motels and their names. Looking quickly through the way the ordinance was written, more than half of those businesses have changed owners or names. And so with the help of our city attorney, we drafted an amendment and revision to the ordinance and primarily changed the boundaries to include general commercial, highway service, mixed-use district and golf course commercial, and shall include all commercial lodging establishments located within these zoning districts. The only other major change to the ordinance, the previous ordinance, the failure for penalty to pay the business occupation tax when it's due as a class two misdemeanor. We changed the verbiage in that and took away that penalty and added a late fee for payments if they weren't paid on time.
Okay, and again, this has been a opportunity for us to gain some additional marketing money for our tourism industry.
We actually were approached by businesses that wanted to be part of the district.
Absolutely.
Can I ask you a question as far as how you monitor that or is it?
The way the ordinance is written, both the old and the new, the finance officer has the right to inspect the books, but it's mostly on the honor system. So we keep track of those hotel and motel owners who come in and pay and can track that based on historical payments and haven't identified any reasons to want to go and audit the books of the individual hotel and motels since they benefit the most from paying that tax that they collect from their overnight guests.
I liked how you wrote it where any person or firm contracted could actually audit the books and their letters. So that was good. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Does that include bedroom breakfasts?
It would.
I have a question, actually. Does that include Airbnb?
It does not have any language specifically for Airbnbs as our zoning ordinance right now doesn't.
It adds Airbnb.
It's like you can rent out your house to somebody.
Oh, okay. Vacation rental by owner. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance eleven eighty-five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, first reading is approved. Moving on to item A under resolution, we have resolution twenty-seven dash nineteen, which is a resolution changing the name of a portion of Canton Avenue to South Dakota Street. And again, this is, I believe, a nine eleven update. So I accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution number twenty seventeen dash nineteen.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution twenty seventeen dash nineteen. Are there any questions, comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have a motion, possible discussion, to authorize the finance officer to move twenty dollars from the restricted equity account five oh one dash twenty-six forty-two one, the former Splash Park account, to another account, five oh one dash twenty-six four two three, the Park Pavilion. I'd accept a motion to authorize that action.
I'll make a motion to authorize the twenty dollar restricted equity fund from the Splash Park to the Park Pavilion Fund.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we authorize the finance officer to move that twenty dollars. Are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, I accept a motion and will discuss a motion to approve agreement for settlement to release between the city of Hot Springs and Cal Majeski. Again, this is an item that was discussed at our last meeting in executive session. You should have an updated, accurate settlement agreement in your packages. I'd accept a motion to approve that agreement at this time.
I'll make the motion to approve the settlement agreement and release between the city of Hot Springs and Cal Majeski. A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept that agreement for settlement. Are there any discussion? Do you have any concerns, Garland?
Just a question.
When I see the attorney walk in toward the finance officer, I'll ask. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, settlement agreement is approved. And item C, we have a possible motion and discussion to support proposal to expand the current Hot Springs Police Reserve Unit by three officers with the funding for the minimum required equipment to come from the contingency fund. And again, Bob Nelson has done a lot of research on this. We appreciate your efforts in this area, Bob, in coordination with the police department. You all should have received information on the proposal in your packages at, I believe, the last meeting. So I'd accept a motion to support that proposal at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to expand the current Hot Springs Police Reserve Unit by three officers for a trial period of two years with funding of four thousand dollars for the minimum required equipment to come from the contingency fund. This motion would also, the expansion of the reserve unit would also be dependent upon the reserve officers signing the City of Hot Springs Police Officer Reserve Agreement that was included in the packet that you folks have.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do expand our reserve unit by three with the contingencies that Bob added to that motion. Are there any questions, comments or discussion?
Can we add the approximate equipment estimated to be thirty-eight sixty-five?
I don't think you said four thousand. You don't want it four thousand?
No.
Because Bob's notes have three thousand eight hundred sixty-three ninety-seven.
Yes, and in the information that I provided to the council, based on the estimates that were received at the time, it was a month and a half, two months ago. The estimated cost of the minimum equipment that was identified was three thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
For all three total?
Yes, for all three. I don't want to get in a situation where we approve that amount and find that the quotes had gone up by a hundred dollars or whatever. If they've gone up significantly and the four thousand dollars have recovered, then we'd have to go back and look at maybe not purchasing a particular portion of that equipment. My hope is it hasn't gone up significantly since those original quotes were received by the police department.
So what you're saying, Bob, is that you don't want the amount to be part of the motion?
No, I did have four thousand dollars as part of the motion. I'm certainly open to any amendment, but I didn't want to just throw it out there and then find out that it comes back at fifty-five hundred dollars and the council isn't aware of that.
Okay.
If it's, if it's four thousand fifty dollars, I'll probably come back and ask you to approve that. If it's forty-two hundred dollars, then we're going to have to work with the reserve folks to see because there's something about that equipment that could be delayed. As I say, the quotes that were received from the police department are two months old at the moment. I hope they say I've gone up significantly.
Any other discussion concerning this motion?
This contract says the reserve officers have to sign for a two-year term.
Yes.
I feel like that's kind of hard to do when they're donating their time. I understand that they have costs with the training and stuff, but I don't know. I feel like that's going to be hard to find people.
The city has costs.
Right. But two years just seems like a lot for somebody donating their time, pretty much.
And in looking at the costs, Skylar, the only cost that they would be looking to reimburse would be fifty percent of the cost of the vest if they terminate part of the two years. As long as all the other equipment that's provided is returned in workable conditions so that other reserve officers or other police officers could use it, then there would be no cost then for that additional equipment. The cost of the vest, because it's personally fit to the officer if they leave after a year or whatever, then that, the likelihood that that vest is going to fit someone else on the council is very small, as an example. You're right. But as far as actual cost to the officer, it would be just fifty percent of the cost of the vest.
Good point. Any other questions or discussion?
I just think that with the red, the freeway that you went and ventured this town, it's a good idea. This is something easy to do.
Okay, thank you.
Here, Paul.
Yes.
I guess I just have a question.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
We didn't have the other gentleman come to the microphone when he spoke.
Pretty loud, the officer's on the microphone.
I just, I just guess I have a question. We really do need a reserve program, there's no doubt. We do have one, but it doesn't need to get larger. I started in 2001. I had to purchase everything that I owned except for two shirts and one pair of pants. I don't know, and then I tend to agree with her as well. I don't understand the two-year agreement. I don't think you're going to get somebody to phone two at a time and get committed to two years of free service. Sometimes it's hard to do. People move and such. I realize there's a cost to it, but to this day, I've never had the police department buy me a vest. I bought all my gear. I buy my clothes now. I have got a little bit allowance from the police department in a couple of years, but since 2001, it's been very minimal. I guess, I think that maybe these guys, maybe it's a part of their own stuff. I don't know. That's what I had to do. And at the time when I started, I was R fourteen, I gave you an idea, we had fourteen officers. So now we have two. You know, just a question, I guess. I don't know. Do you think buying equipment is going to help get the guys or? I understand we have three guys and that's interested. I don't know who they are for sure. Do they not? I guess, I don't know. I guess I haven't talked to these guys, so I don't know what they're, what they're in for. If they're willing to buy their own stuff, maybe. I don't know. I had to.
Ryan, can I say something quick before you jump in here? It's yours, Paul, but I asked the police officer here a question before the meeting today, how you would feel about this or the, our prison reserve officers who paid for everything themselves. I have a question about that and I'm glad you spoke up because now I know.
I mean, we need them. I mean, there's no doubt. There's no doubt. I'd like to have more than three personally. And I would think even having put on a class for three people unless we, and it sounds like maybe we're going to join with, I don't, I don't know this service best, but that instructor would probably need more than three people. But anyway, if we're doing something with another department, I can understand why we're going to, or we'll get more people. Anyway, I just, yeah, it's a little concerning.
Thank you, Ryan. To answer your question specifically, the reason that I included it in the proposal, prior to being on the council and since I've been on the council, one of the common things is what happened to the reserve police department? That's the question that is out there all the time.
Very good question.
Is to be a lot more, is to be very active. What happened to it?
Correct.
I can only go by what I've been told by Officer Close. His reply to me was, he's tried to include expanding the reserve department before and there hadn't been much momentum from the council to approve the funding to do that. So if they just stopped making the request when there didn't seem to be the willingness for the support for the department. So as has been talked about up here, if we're going to increase the department, then is it unfair to previous officers? Absolutely. Is this something that I would envision would happen with all new officers? No. So would this bunch of officers benefit where others haven't and the future ones might not? Yes. But if that gets the program up and it gets more police presence available to the public, then the council needs to decide whether that's something that benefits them. I would certainly hope that it would in no way affect now current reserve officers' decisions going forward and they wouldn't feel like we're somehow valuing new reserves more than we have the previous reserves. It's the current reserves along with the police department that's going to make this work. You're the ones that are going to train these new officers. So that's the reason it's there is that I was told personally, the funding had never been there to expand the department and there wasn't the willingness on behalf of the council. I think you're recognizing there probably is a willingness and a recognition of a need to do it. If the officers that want to, I don't know any other way to do it, Ryan.
I understand. I do know like in the past, like.
Could you pull the mic up a little?
Sure. I do know for like in the past.
Turned on the button on the bottom.
Switch on there.
He'll come out.
Hello? Hello? I do know in the past that, and I know right now, I think we have at least two totes full of uniforms. I don't know if that's, I'm assuming that's probably in the budget as well at this point. In the past, officers, as they use their uniforms, sometimes they're still good uniforms, but the full-time officers get allowance. So sometimes some of those get only back for the reserves. So I know we have like quite a few shirts, coats, that type of thing that's already going, or back in there. And I'm not stating money about duty bill or two. I don't know. I guess it just kind of.
Have I ever said you say that there are uniforms available, there would be uniforms available for the new officers?
As far as I know, there's at least two totes in the back.
I guess on that, you know, they might possibly fit. It's hard to say. Where the vast majority of this cost is coming in based on my understanding of it, and I was thinking about leaving the mic, is vests, a radio and guns, which the vest can be used by all of the reserve officers, but the gun definitely could be used by current reserve officers as well as anybody new that comes because of my understanding, we checked in and out type thing. It's all the radio, you know, that's where a lot of the cost is coming in out of this four thousand dollars. From my understanding of it.
Another question I have for you, Bob, then. Would that be the purchase of three handguns then or is that just one or two?
I believe it was two. Three vests, three weapons, three uniforms, three badges, three body cameras. No cost on the body cameras, use existing cameras, not a patrol vehicle. So there isn't any radios. The radios are coming in at twenty-five hundred dollars a piece. There's no way it's, it just, we left the radio off. Chief Close felt like that was something manageable. So yes, three weapons, three vests, three uniforms, three badges. But if there is existing uniforms that could be used, that could certainly be a lot of the cost. Chief Close felt very strongly that whatever uniforms the reserves would wear would need to be of the same quality and the same look as full-time officers.
Correct.
You have one hundred dollars dedicated per reserve officer.
If you're spending ones for a hundred dollars, the shirt and pants could be purchased.
And I guess if there was a checkout procedure, that'd probably be with Chief Close and not you guys because that's another issue that I would have personally, so.
Checkout procedure.
With the handguns. I personally want to continue to use mine, but I personally wouldn't want anybody else to use my handgun. I'd have to check out somebody else's handgun.
Yeah.
If I'm going to put my life in some, you know, my life is on the line, I'm not going to use a handgun that I'm hoping somebody else did drop.
Because you've purchased your own weapon, it would certainly be my intent to not force you to use something you're uncomfortable with.
Sure, that's probably you have to achieve as well, but I'm, we just-
How the weapons would be used was discussed, and the fact that there would need to be very detailed checkout, I guess.
Sure.
You know, check in and then check out.
Yep.
That the officers are satisfied that that weapon is something that they want to put in the life of their hand, or their life-
Correct. And if there's one officer per weapon, I get that. That wouldn't be such an issue. I just wanted to-
As an idea?
If there's a sharing thing, then that's a little bit different.
Yeah. So no, that was the reason that I went forward with, you know-
Well, I appreciate the thought.
Full-time equipment for each new officer.
Sure. Well, I appreciate the council looking at this. You definitely need some folks.
And we appreciate your coming forward and sharing your experience.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your service to our safety.
Ryan, how long have you been a reserve?
I've been a reserve since 2001.
2001, wow. And when you first signed up, did you sign an agreement for a certain amount of time?
No, I did not. Thanks.
Okay, any other-
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the council?
I don't know that my question really was answered. I mean, I don't know how you're fair to everybody, but it just seems as it can be revisited later in your safety committee. If there's any way we could revisit it. These officers who purchased their own guns, their own uniforms, everything, and now we're going to give it to somebody for free. Maybe, I don't know. I don't know. You've seen, it's already done something to do with around.
Okay, we do have a motion before us to support this expanded reserve officer program, and we've heard the discussion. Are there any further comments or questions? If not, hearing none, I would like to go ahead and ask the council to vote via roll call. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Carol Anne Swartback?
Yes.
Skylar Russell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion does carry, and again, Bob, thank you for all the research and hard work that you've done. And obviously, as this program is implemented, we'll have to follow and make sure that it's implemented fairly. Moving on, finance officer report.
Thank you. There are no finances in your packet. Being the second meeting of the month, just a few items to note from the finance office in the last couple of weeks. I've had conversations with council members who is concerned about possibly restricting balances for 2020 road construction projects. So we'll be discussing at our admin finance meeting on November, sorry, December 4th, the possibility of restricting balances in both our water and wastewater fund for the proposed 2020 road reconstruction projects. Also, to review the available cash reserves in 2018 after we finish our 2017 audit to potentially add more restricted money to the 2012 fund to help cover the $420,000 already dedicated to the architectural style lighting for that project. We have a lot of goals and plans and dreams for this project, and making sure that we're financially in a good spot to take advantage of as many of those as we can is going to be vital and restricting, further restricting those funds to make sure that we have the money available for those things we've already dedicated funding towards will be important. So I thank, I thank Georgia for the idea, and we'll be discussing that more, and I'll be looking for your approval to do some of those things coming up soon. The city surplus auction, which is an online-only auction, is scheduled for the 6th through the 12th of December. We've been getting lots of calls and interest. We will be combining with the county. I would like to share with the public, if you're unable to access the internet, you're welcome to call Bray Dean to place an absentee bid. If there's something coming up for bid on the auction that you're interested in and you don't have access to the internet, you do have the ability to do that. Also, our library is a great resource for those who might not have internet at home if you'd like to go up and take a look. I did notice today that they have the first posting up. They have some pictures, and they don't have all the, I think they call them lot numbers and pictures assigned yet, but some of the pictures are up, and you can review our minutes to see the items that have been surplus. If anybody's interested in viewing them in person, just contact City Hall and we'll tell you where to go. Our loss control survey is scheduled for 12/12/2017. This survey is done every three years. It's a condition of the city's SDPAA, which is our South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, our insurance provider, and the South Dakota Municipal League Workers Comp Fund membership. It's designed to help with our loss control efforts. Jeff Lanning is a loss control representative for safety benefits. He'll conduct the survey, and he will be accompanied by Kim on that day, going to all the locations and then preparing the department heads to be prepared to provide him the information he needs to complete that survey. So that's coming right up as well.
Okay, thank you, Misty.
Thank you.
City Administrator Report, Kim.
Okay, the Development Coordinator, which was the position that was formerly known as the Planning Administrator, which was the position I could help, has been put out there as an open position. So far, we have nine applications that we've received. It will be remaining open until December 18th, when it will be closed. At that point, our committee to select the next Development Coordinator will start working through things, and hopefully we'll have somebody hired for January. I wanted to thank Sam again for agreeing to help with the comprehensive plan. I've had great input from our citizens, and right now, the bulk of the writing is in my lap, and having Sam to help me through that and be prepared so that by the time that the Planning and Zoning Commission gets through their general review and a recommendation to the city council, you'll actually have somebody on the council that's familiar with absolutely every aspect of it, which will be a great advantage for the public hearings that we'd have at that point. So again, thanks to Sam for that. And I wanted to also, you guys, all of the city council members got this packet in their folders. All of our department heads got them as well, if they have any contact or their team has any contact with our customers, which are you. And in an effort to make sure that we're getting the complaints going to the right place, what happens a lot of times is we'll have people stopping on the street and talking with one of our construction workers when they're in the middle of a job, and they're saying, hey, what are you going to do about this? And they say, oh, that's a great, great question. But there it goes, because they're in the middle of a job, they can't go and write it down, they can't text me, they can't, you know, and it's forgotten. Meanwhile, the citizen feels like they've made their complaint, but it never got anywhere, it never got to the right person. So what we're doing is every council person and everybody that's out on the street is going to have one of these. It's a customer complaint form, and basically you can fill it out, you can drop it in the mail, you can drop it by City Hall. It's small, it's easy, and you can just real quick jot down what the issues are. The other complaint forms we have are pretty cumbersome. They asked you to get a whole lot of, like, having you do the research, this one doesn't. It just describes the problem and kind of gives you an idea of what we expect, what our goals are, and that everything should go through my department. I will be the complaint coordinator. You can come and complain to me all you want, but I'll make you put it in writing. But that way, it gets to the right people who can solve your problems. And that's fine with me if I can sit here and listen all day to people complain. So, but I'd like to, I like to solve problems, I like adding it to the right people. So, for those of you who are listening, things are going to be changing, so don't be a little bit concerned whenever you're talking about a complaint, somebody goes, that's right here. Build this act. So, but seriously, that's the best way to make sure that your complaint is really heard. You had a question?
Can we use those for accolades as well?
You can. I'll take them.
Everybody has a bid, but I'd like to be able to present accolades as well, so.
And by all means, feel free anytime, and you can also do so on our Facebook page, or just jot a note down to our mayor, or even just stop by and give it to Mary or Barbara from the front. Anytime you like.
I think it's an excellent idea. Can we, if we don't have those with me, can we refer people to City Hall to pick one up?
Yes, we have them at City Hall, and for those who like this and are keeping it in their wallet, because they made them wallet size, and in a little protective case, because the guys in the construction crews get them pretty nasty. Well, you don't want to be hit at something like that, I'll tell you. So I cleaned my husband's jeans for 30 years after concrete construction. You don't know what you're going to find in a wallet. But the great part is, is that I have these, because it's only half a sheet, they're really cheap to make, and I have a whole set of them, so anybody can pick up extras. And they're going to be held right where you keep your folders, and right where the department heads keep their folders, so it has access to everybody and they can update them anytime. Okay?
Do you have a question?
Oh, another one.
Is there a live version for those of us who do like to use the computer?
Yeah, actually, when you're doing that, I guess I could make a live one that you could fill out. I just figured that's when I get people that do emails, and emails are always mine. Do you want me to make you a live version one? Okay, I can make one. I'll figure out how to make one live so that you can just send it directly from the forum, fill it out online, and send it from the forum. Give me a couple of weeks on that one, though.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. As far as mayor's report tonight, again, we're nearing the completion of Boulder Falls. Hopefully, we can keep the deer off the wet concrete. We've got a few tracks across some driveways, but myself, Tracy Bastian, our Public Orps engineer, and Kim are going to do a detailed inspection for punch list items starting tomorrow so that we can have a good list for the contractor to finish up before he leaves. One other thing that I've done, sent out a letter to invite pastors and church leaders to attend a meeting here at the Mueller Center on Wednesday, the 29th of November, to discuss church security and safety. Our police chief and our police officers have had some prevention and reaction training through the ALIS program, and I'd like them to share that with some of the church leaders that are interested. Obviously, we want to open that meeting up for discussion, and I think it's a way to hopefully prepare our community for something that we hope never happens, but it's always been proven that preparation and planning does eventually save lives. So that meeting will be Wednesday, the 29th of November, at 1:00 in the afternoon here at the Mueller Civic Center. And anyone from the community is also invited to attend that if they would like. One final thing, we have been contacted by Black Golden Biochar, and they will be presenting us a proposal to use the city slash piles at the city maintenance yard to produce a charcoal product called Biochar. And we're hoping that that will morph into a business for Hot Springs, bringing some employees in. But the immediate thing is that it takes care of a slash pile that continues to grow. We don't want to have to burn that, which is, seems to be the only other alternative that we have other than expanding a lot of money to carry away. And so that is coming, and we should have a proposal from them sometime in December, and hopefully they'll be starting late in December or after the 1st of the year. With that, I'd like to ask the council if we could go into executive session to discuss legal matters concerning that Pete Leighton's son's airport lining contract.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved, executive, go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Time is 8:26. Okay, we'll reconvene at 9:07. I'd accept a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
It moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.